Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Go left.
Hi, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good to see so many of you here this morning. I'm Karen DeBois-Walton, Chair of the Connecticut State Board of Education, and happy to call to order the meeting December sixth, 2023 at 9:30 a.m., meeting of the Connecticut State Board of Education, being held today at the Legislative Office Building here in Room 1A. So welcome, welcome everybody, and happy holidays for this time of year. We'll begin with our Rising to the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and the republic of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Certainly welcome, our esteemed visitor today is Representative Cory of the Education Committee who's in the house with us this morning, so welcome. I hope I'm not missing any of the listening. No, I started it. It's about months since we did have you here. This is important and a busy meeting this morning with important actions to take that don't require us to take a vote on those things, but an opportunity to really hear from, hear from our educators and leaders out there doing some good work, and then hear from the team at the State Department, so we're excited for this. We will begin, though, our meeting with our public participation. Vice Chair Benham will call names, yes, will call names and ask you to come to this in front of us, and we'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. If you're going a little bit longer than three minutes, we will generally remind you to wrap up that final thought. Good morning. Our first speaker is Representative Jeff Kurtz.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks to be on this side of the table for once. Kind of underfired, I don't know how it feels. So, good morning, Chair, good morning, Commissioner. I just want to take this opportunity first and foremost to welcome you to our house. It's nice to have you in the building. And to take a moment to celebrate a lot of the work that the State Department of Education has just undertaken and just completed with respect to the right-to-read legislation that has passed through the legislature overwhelmingly, with overwhelming support. And understanding that the legislature has asked you and tasked the department with coming up with a way in which to fulfill the intent of the legislation, it was no small undertaking, and the amount of work and time and effort that went into that. And specifically, I want to give a special shout-out to Melissa Hickey and the team of folks that worked alongside her. To be able to go out and do individual site visits to the number of districts that she did, that in and of itself, I think, is a success because being able to have those pointed one-on-one conversations with districts and to really kind of take deep dives into what they are doing is really going to be able to not only expose, and I mean that in a positive manner, the workings and the goings-on within a district around literacy, and to be able to capture that data and just strengthen those relationships with districts is a win in and of itself. Everything that we do in this building and outside is based on our relationships and all relational. And so if we have that foundation, we can move through whatever those opportunities or struggles may be on the other side. As we know, the results of the waiver applications were sent out this past Friday. Not all districts were granted waivers, and overwhelming majority were provided with waivers or some adjustments that they do need to make. But I think the State Department of Education has made it very clear that to those 20-something districts that were not granted waiver, that they are going to work alongside them and continue to partner with them to see how to best support them. We do understand as a legislature that oftentimes there are financial implications to decisions that we make. There has been money that has been allocated towards this effort. I will admittedly say that I don't believe that we have enough money to take care of some of the challenges that these districts will be seeing as a result of their limited waiver denial. But I think that I will commit as the House Chair of Education alongside the State Department of Education and other legislators to work with those districts to see how we may best support them through this transition. You know, I think having conversations, extensive conversations with Ms. Hickey that they have discovered that there are plenty of additional programs, models, that I believe have been added to the list for districts to be able to take a look at to see how they may best incorporate those as they kind of work through this challenging period. But again, a huge congrats and thank you very much to the State Department of Education, to Commissioner and her team. She always lets her team do what they do best, and that is their job. We invest in these people, we trust these people, we respect these people. So again, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all those who worked on this.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, and you are always welcome at our meetings. I also want to thank you for your participation on the educators' education council and the work that's happening there as well.
Absolutely.
Great to have you, these legislators.
Definitely. Have an easy day, everyone.
And Ms. Barajas?
Buenos dias, señores miembros de la junta de educación de Conérico. Mi nombre es Imelda Barajas, soy de México. Mi primer y único idioma es español. Tengo un hijo, su nombre es Adrian. Él tiene quince años. Él es un niño de educación especial. Él estudia en las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Todos sabemos lo importante que son las reuniones de PPT. Imagina estar en una reunión donde todos los profesionales que trabajan exclusivamente con su hijo, donde se va a hablar de los progresos de él y las metas. Ahora imagina que ninguno de ellos habla su idioma, y lo peor es que no te garanticen que va a haber un intérprete calificado para que puedas entender la reunión. Eso es tan frustrante, y esto pasa siempre en todas las reuniones que he tenido con ellos. Dicen que es muy difícil que el Board of Education les mande un intérprete. Lo mismo pasa con el reporte de las reuniones, siempre me los mandan en inglés. Muchas veces les he dicho que me lo manden en español para ello, pero ellos dicen que no pueden proveerme este servicio. Otras veces he llamado a la escuela para saber de situaciones sobre mi hijo y pido hablar con alguien que hable español, y ellos se atrevieron a decir que era yo quien tenía que hablar inglés. No es justo que sea tan difícil comunicarse con las personas que trabajan con mi hijo, que trabajan con mi hijo cada día. Como madre merezco ser la voz en la educación de mi hijo, pero cuando no hay personas que hablen español o la escuela no provea interpretación o traducción, no puedo abogar por la educación de mi hijo. Las escuelas en Hartford necesitan mejores servicios de interpretación y traducción y brinden más trabajadores que hablen nuestro idioma. Soy miembro de Make the Road Conérico y soy parte de la coalición de padres y estudiantes ILL hacia el éxito, que lucha para mejorar las escuelas en Conérico para estudiantes de ILL, y asegura que padres que no hablan inglés tengan una voz en la educación de sus hijos. Hoy estoy testificando en favor de derecho para padres de estudiantes ILL y pidiendo a la Junta de Educación del Estado trabaje para asignar los fondos que las escuelas necesitan para implementar la ley. Gracias por su tiempo.
I'm going to read the translation of Imelda's testimony. Good morning, dear members of the Connecticut State Board of Education. My name is Imelda Barajas and I'm from Mexico. My first and only language is Spanish. I have a son named Adrian who is 15 years old. He is a special education student at HMTCI here in Hartford. We all know how important PPT, Planning and Placement Team meetings are. Imagine an essential annual meeting with all of the professionals who work with your son where they discuss his progress and goals. Now imagine that nobody speaks your language, and even worse, you're not guaranteed a qualified interpreter who can make sure that you understand the meeting. This is very frustrating, and it happens in all the meetings that I've had with my son's team. They say that it is very difficult for the Board of Ed to send an interpreter. The same thing happens with the meeting reports. They always send them to me in Spanish, many times, in English. Many times I have asked them to send the reports to me in Spanish, but they tell me they can't provide this service. Other times I've called the school to understand situations about my son. I ask for someone to please speak Spanish, and they have the nerve to tell me that I'm the one who has to learn English. It's not fair that it is this difficult to communicate with the people who work with my son every day. As a mother, I deserve to have a voice in my child's education, but when there is no one who speaks Spanish or the school does not provide interpretation or translation, I cannot advocate for my child's education. Hartford schools need better interpretation and translation services, and they need to employ more staff who speak our language. I am a member of Make the Road Connecticut and part of the ILL Parents and Students Coalition that fights to improve Connecticut schools for ILL students and ensure that parents who do not speak English have a voice in their children's education. Today, I am testifying in favor of the Parents' Bill of Rights for ILLML and asking the State Board of Education to work to allocate the funds that schools need to implement the law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I want to thank you for that as well, and Brian Strinkfeldt, who is our specialized director here. I want to make sure Brian is present now before they leave here today. Karen Westphal?
Hello, thank you, thank you, everyone. I'm now going to read testimony on behalf of my colleague Helen Quinones with Make the Road Connecticut. This is testimony in support of Connecticut's New Multilingual Learner Bill of Rights. Members of the Connecticut State Board of Education, my name is Helen Quinones, and I am a community organizer at Make the Road Connecticut, a statewide, member-led organization focused on building people power through community organizing, policy innovation, legal and survival services, and transformative leadership. I want to thank the Connecticut General Assembly, Governor Lamont, and the State Board of Education on behalf of all families of the state whose first language isn't English for protecting parents and students' rights to receive accessible, quality education for all multilingual learners and their families. Connecticut public schools need to invest more in a system where ILL parents and students' rights are protected, such as improving and prioritizing communication with the parents and families of their students regardless of the country of origin or language they speak. Parents play a fundamental role in their children's education. They have the right to access all their child's educational information. ILL families feel they are not fully involved in their child's education, and this is something that this legislation will change. As a community organizer, I meet and talk with parents every day, and I hear the problems of ILL families. I testify today in favor of this issue because it is something that must be fully implemented for the next school year. In this way, all the necessary resources will be assigned to all the districts. Thus, the relationship between schools and parents will be fruitful this coming year, and our students will improve their academic performance. Thank you for bringing this topic to your attention. It will be wonderful to continue working with you, the State Department of Education, in all of our districts in order to have this ready for the families. It's important that all stakeholders involved in the betterment of our children's education can work together. Thank you so much for your attention to this. Helen Quinones, community organizer, Make the Road Connecticut.
Amy Dowell?
Hi, good morning. Thank you to the Chair and to the members of the Board of Education, and I want to acknowledge Commissioner Russell Tucker as well. I'm here, my name is Amy Dowell, and I am the Executive Director of Education Reform Now Connecticut. And we have been deeply involved in the advocacy work regarding the right-to-read legislation. So this is both a professional moment for me, but also a personal moment for me. I have a child with dyslexia and dysgraphia, and while I've been involved in many issues around public education here in Connecticut, this has been by far the most important, and the partnership that I have been a part of working closely with members of the State Board of Education, their professionalism, their transparency, their commitment to students on this issue has been something to really witness. And I'm deeply grateful as a parent and as an advocate, watching this legislation become a reality in every classroom in Connecticut for elementary students is going to be life-changing for so many families. And I am just deeply, deeply grateful to have been a small part of this. And I also just want to mention the education chairs in the legislature and Senator Patricia Billy Miller, who is here right now. And I will not hold her up to speak, but she has been a phenomenal champion for over a decade working on this work. And we are just overwhelmed with the systemic change that we're about to see here in Connecticut for students. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Pat Billy Miller?
Good morning, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I hadn't planned on attending today, but I heard, well, I know that the waiver list was released yesterday. And I just want to thank the Commissioner for taking this charge on. When we started this right-to-read legislation, the initiative, and thank you to Amy Dowell and the Reading Coalition, Reading to Write Coalition, we didn't think that SDE had the bandwidth to do it. And it's been my experience working with SDE over the last 10 years on this initiative to make sure our students in Connecticut can read at least by the end of third grade. There was always a pushback or tug to try to get SDE to do what we needed them to do. And then you had some of the commissioners that were on board. You had some that were pretty apprehensive. But Commissioner, thank you, because you stood up and said, "We want to do this." So I want to thank you for taking that charge, because now our kids are going to know how to read. And we know at least 95% because they say that 95% of students know, can learn how to read, and you're giving them, at least 95% of the children, the opportunity to read. You're looking at someone that struggled with reading comprehension. You know when I found out that I had a problem? When I was in 12th grade, when a reading coach realized what my issue was. I knew phonics, I knew how to write, but I had a problem with reading comprehension. I don't want our students to wait until they're in the 12th grade to figure that out. And I only figured it out because I was in private school. Public school, they never saw what my issues were. And so I've fought for this for over 10 years because I want children, especially Black and Hispanic children, the ones who experience the achievement gap or opportunity gap, I want them to have the same opportunity that I have, and that is to be successful in life. And so, yes, it's difficult, this journey that we're on, what we're about to do, it is new. And yes, there are people that are saying, "No, we don't want to do this. It's not going to work." But guess what? What do they say insanity is? Doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. We've been doing the same thing over and over again, and we expect different results. And COVID has shown us, and has exacerbated the problem, that what we're doing is not working. So if I feel passionate about this, you're hearing the passion, because I don't want children who look like me to grow up in this society and not have the opportunity to be successful. And it's only because of my education that I can sit here before you today. I recently received an invitation from the Pennsylvania General Assembly. The Education Committee asked me to come to Pennsylvania to testify. They want to take the bold move too. And what really, what really made me decide, the impetus for me to really do this work and stand up for it with Mississippi, one of the poorest states in the country, had the political will to do what they need to do to make sure those children can read. And do you know during COVID, they were the only state that moved their points, that increased their points in reading during COVID. And so other states are following suit, where they're looking at what Massachusetts does, they're looking at Connecticut. So I want to thank you, Commissioner, you and your team, Melissa. Thank you very much for taking this on. You're rolling this out with fidelity. And I know it has not been easy, I know you've been criticized, but you're standing up for our students, and I thank you for that. And we will no longer be known as the state. I'm looking forward to not to be known as the state with the widest achievement gap, and we're one of the richest states in this country. So again, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Senator, I think goes right back to you. Thank you for your leadership on this, your persistence on this, and your willingness to carry the Connecticut story beyond, because we share your commitment to closing that opportunity, and you think that it's existed far too long, and the right-to-read is a big piece of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public participation, so thank you.
Good morning. How you doing? Tom Strinkfellow, visitor from Manchester. It was late the last time to make public comments, but, uh, I'm sorry. It was late the last time to make public comments, but, uh...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stringfellow. And public comment is always very welcome. This meeting does certainly help to set the agenda for work that happens at committee level and certainly within departments. Always very welcome. Very appreciative of the comments today around the right-to-read, around the parents who are right, and certainly always look forward to the reading selections that you bring forward to us. So we are going to move forward with our meeting, as that concludes public participation. It has been a busy month for our board members, certainly for the department staff. I want to certainly lift up and thank our colleagues who have been working so hard on the issues that were brought forth by the parents and school community willingly, and appreciate your continued efforts on holding those hearings and advancing that to resolution. I want to certainly thank the team members that have been out doing school business. It is always so wonderful to see the work happening in buildings across our great state. And I know under the leadership of our Vice Chair Benham, committee members have been recently to Derby, to New Britain, to Hartford, maybe Michigan, some places.
Waterbury.
Waterbury, I think somewhere, to Waterbury. So thank you to the board members, Vice Chair Benham, for your leadership on that, and to board members for making those visits. Certainly also want to lift up the release of the results of the waiver and the work that happened. I know through the Commissioner's leadership, through the talent office, the work that has happened to get us to this point. I do believe that we're taking a monument which I've forged, and certainly want to highlight the consistent concern that our board member actually has raised around literacy and ensuring that this department is taking the right steps there. So thank you for that. And I had a wonderful pleasure of joining our Commissioner at the Teacher of the Year celebration since we last met. And that is just incredibly rewarding to see building leaders come forth with teachers who have received that designation from across all our districts, and then to celebrate them. So it's been a busy, busy month, and thank everybody for their role in that. I want to respect some of our guests that have traveled to be with us today, and ask the board's indulgence in moving item 11A up on the agenda so that we can take time in today's meeting to give really immense recognition to Connecticut 2023 National Blue Ribbon Schools. So I'm going to turn it over to the Commissioner at this point. Am I trying to do a G? Or am I trying? I am trying to get to a G at this point.
Good morning. Board Chair DuBois Walton, Vice Chair Benham, Commissioner Russell Tucker, and other members of the State Board of Education. It is a pleasure to be here to present to you the 2023 Blue Ribbon Schools. Before I do that, I just wanted to give a little bit of opening remarks in terms of how the schools are identified and nominated by the State Board. And before I do that, I want to acknowledge Renee Savoy from the Performance Office. Renee's over there, Renee. She works closely with me on the accountability work and also the identification of the Blue Ribbon Schools. So thank you, Renee, for working with me over many, many years on this work, and really appreciate it. Couldn't have done it without your contributions here. You know, in the data world, we put out a lot of information, and oftentimes, we're identifying schools in need of state support, or schools that have wide disparities or achievement gaps. But one of the more pleasurable aspects of the work is to identify and recognize the good work that is happening across some of our schools. So the C S D E actually identifies and nominates, we can nominate up to four schools to the U S Department of Education that are recognized as Blue Ribbon Schools. We can nominate two schools for a category that they call exemplary high performing. We can also identify two schools in a category that they call exemplary gap closing, so exemplary high performing, exemplary gap closing. And we use the results of our next-generation accountability system to identify those schools. And within that accountability system, we look for what we call schools of distinction. And I'll give you the two ways in which we look at schools of distinction. One is, we look at high overall achievement. And those are basically schools that are among the top 10% of schools for having the highest accountability index. And the accountability index is our overall score based on all the indicators in the system. And if you remember all our indicators, we include achievement, growth, chronic ascetism, college readiness, graduation rates, et cetera. There's a lot of different indicators that go into it, and we identify those exemplary high-performing schools based on the high overall achievement. There's another way in which we identify schools of distinction, and that is through high academic growth. And here, we're looking at our smarter balanced assessments, students in grades four through eight, we're looking at schools that are among the top 10% in terms of academic growth. We look at English, language arts, and mathematics separately. We also look at all students, but particularly, we look at our high-need students group and look to see who are the schools who are making, who are among the top 10% of growth schools, if you will. And those are the schools among which we look for exemplary gap-closing schools. Because if our students of high needs are growing, then in those schools, the gaps are closing. So that's kind of how we look at it. And annually, we identify about 150 schools of distinction. So when we look to identify four schools, you know, we're looking for a pattern of distinction. We're not just looking for one-year distinction, we're looking for multiple years. I mean, that's kind of one of the things we look for. We also look to see, are they being identified for schools of distinction in multiple categories? Not just one subject, many full subjects, not just all students, but definitely high-need students when it comes to gap closing. Many of these schools, maybe, or some of these schools are high-performing, but they also have high growth. So you know, we look to see sort of like, there's a pattern in these schools. And lastly, you know, I don't want to give the impression that the Blue Ribbon Schools, you know, in Blue Ribbon Schools, like 100% of the students are proficient, and everyone is meeting their growth targets, and no one's chronically absent. These administrators will be the first ones to tell you that they're doing many things right, but there are also things that they need to work on. I mean, and we are there with them on all of that. But what we're recognizing here is that they are indeed doing many things, many things right, and doing it on a consistent basis. And they're showing us that success is possible in all schools across the state and with all students across the state. So with that background, now let's meet our schools. Given the room setup here, the way I'm going to handle it is I'm going to introduce the school, one school first, they come up, they do a brief set of remarks, maybe four to five minutes. I appreciate that, and then maybe engage some questions when we get to the next school. Does that sound good? Okay. Great. So first, we will hear from Marine Science Magnet High School. This is a school operated by LEARN, the Regional Education Service Center, LEARN, and they're being identified, yeah, please come on up, Kate, you can take this chair. Okay, thank you. And they're being identified as, or they have been identified as, an exemplary high-performing school. And we're joined by Executive Director Kate Erickson from LEARN, and also the Principal of the school, Tara Amatrujo. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kate.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioner Russell Tucker. Nice to see you. Today, we are really excited to be here. LEARN has a 30-year history of running magnet schools in southeastern Connecticut, and we are excited to be able to celebrate the achievements of one of our exceptional schools, Marine Magnet, Marine Science Magnet High School. And all LEARN's schools are centered on three core values of building a culture of belonging, setting high expectations, and investing in our staff and our leadership. And LEARN works diligently to support the continuous improvement of our staff with the knowledge that they are truly our greatest asset in terms of supporting each child from over 30 different sending schools. And sitting beside me today, as Ajit mentioned, was Tara Amatrujo, and she's truly one of the finest school leaders that I've had the privilege to work with. So Tara, want to talk a little bit more about your school?
Sure, of course. I never pass up on a chance to talk about our wonderful school. So thank you very much for having us today. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Russell Tucker. Thank you for your message to us in D.C. on video. That was really special. I do want to say that our school's founding principle is that we are focused on, that we're anchored in equity and sustainability. And thinking about the comments earlier today about closing that gap in equity and opportunity for our students is absolutely at the heart of what we do every single day at our school. Each year, we welcome a number of students from over 30 sending towns. They have very different academic experiences and backgrounds, knowledge, and skills. And we make it our business to understand exactly what every single one of our students needs from us. And that's in terms of what they need academically, but also personally. And I am especially humbled to be able to represent the faculty at our school. They put their full heart and soul into every single student to find exactly that sweet spot between academic challenge and support, to truly understand who they are as people and what they're looking for out of their lives. And I think that really is at the heart. Do we look at data, and do we invest in school reform initiatives, and do we stay nimble when we need to? Yes, we do those things, but the most important thing for us is understanding our students and what they need. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Don't run away.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First of all, thank you, Ajit, thank you for that wonderful overview of the process and the collection and teeing this up. And thank you both for joining us to share about your wonderful school. And I know my colleagues are going to want to ask you questions, so.
I'm on? Yeah. I couldn't not say something. So many people know, or at least I've told them at some point in time, that my children spoke in the same year, 2022, really from Marine Science. And all of the things that Amatrujo just stated about the school are 100% true, right? They're, they've ventured there for a lot of things, and the principal joined Marine Science in the middle of a lot of stuff going on at that high school. So during the time my children were there, there was a changeover in leadership, there was COVID-19, and then there was trying to come back out of that. And Tara really elevated the school and made those students feel, you know, 100% that they were very much here for. And so I could go on, but then I'll start crying. So just want to say congratulations and thank you.
Other question? So tell us, so there are obviously a number of things that you are doing exceptionally well and consistently, and have demonstrated that pattern. I love that Ajit also makes ways that we can all continue to grow. What are, where are you leaning in? What's next? What do you, what are the challenges you're facing?
Sure. So we are in the midst of a really heavy lift in terms of grade reform and the quality and alignment of our assessments, and making sure that our students' grades are truly representing their learning and their skills, and so that they know that they are going on to college and post-secondary opportunities with exactly what they need to know and do to be successful. And that is a lift for teachers, it's a lift for students to be able to really take that into heart, and for the whole community to understand a really different way of doing business in terms of reporting on student growth. So I think it's been a positive change overall, but that is something that we are definitely working on. Thanks.
So last night, I had a home conversation with one of your juniors, a young man named Khalil, who's doing AP projects, and I was so impressed, so impressed. And he raised the issue of grade change and how that impacts him. He studies, he researches on how fleet deprivation affects student progress. He was very helpful here with 10 questions and double-up questions. So shout out to Khalil and you guys for comparing this so well.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner.
So thank you so much for being here and allowing to give us a shot in the arm sometimes that we need with all the work that's happening, that we're doing things right. And when that happens, how to augment, how to amplify that and to lift that up, and that's a part of what we're doing here today. So thank you for the work that you're doing, and all we're doing is that, is what have we done moving forward. But just really appreciate allowing us to take this opportunity to say directly to you, we didn't get a chance to be with you in D.C., but we're glad that you were there, representing Connecticut. Thank you for the work that you continue to do, and know that the agency is here to support you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing more.
Awesome.
Thank you, thank you again. The school, even though it's a small high school, they do have so many partnerships with local colleges and universities, and provide so many options for students in terms of acquiring college credit before high school graduation. So kudos, kudos to the team. Second, we'll hear from Philip R. Smith School from South Windsor, that has also been identified as an exemplary high-performing school. And we are joined by Tracy Peterson, Assistant Superintendent of South Windsor, and Michelle Dixon, the Principal of Philip R. Smith School. So Tracy, hi, and Michelle.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here today. Like our colleagues, we are also very honored to be recognized for this outstanding distinction. And while I've only been a part of the South Windsor team for four years, I can assure you that the commitment to high-quality instruction precedes me, but it's been my honor to join a district and a school committed to excellence in education. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the Principal, Michelle Dixon, of Philip R. Smith.
Thanks, Tracy. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's been an opportunity of a lifetime to be a Blue Ribbon School. I don't think there's anyone more proud of me than my mother. Um, I've been a... You know, that's a great idea. So I've been the principal at P R S for 12 years, and I thought today, and honestly, in the report that I wrote, I'd focus on tier-one instruction, because tier-one instruction is what really hits 100% of our students, and providing them with the most, oops. Providing them with the best education is really what we're all about. So... So one of the strategies that we use is multi-tiered support system, which has a Tier One plan associated with it. So before students get to a Tier Two intervention, Tier Three, or special education, we're identifying students through their data to support them right in the classroom with a Tier One plan, where we're progress monitoring to make sure that they're closing that gap. We also are very fortunate to have a reading consultant who provides Tier One coaching for literacy, as well as a math coach, who is providing Tier One professional development embedded right in the classroom for math. We meet regularly to discuss data, so any time that we are accumulating data, we're taking a look at it in data team meetings, talking about progress, talking about next steps. And that's for all of our students. We also build a schedule every year that provides an intervention block for both reading and math, so that students who do need, all our students need differentiation, and that block of time for reading and math allows for extension, review, small group instruction, and outside of the classroom, potentially intervention, as well as special education instruction. So our kids who receive those interventions do not miss out on any instruction. We have weekly PLCs that actually focus on data and best practices in reading and math, as well as writing. We started goal-setting with our kids. So, you know, at one point, I said to the staff, why are we keeping their scores and their outcomes secret? They should know, because as an adult, don't we want to know when we put effort in that we're being successful? So we really started sharing that data with kiddos and setting goals with them with built-in incentives, like a book plus and book sending machine. And we're working on a math mobile now, because math cannot be left out. And then one of the other strategies that really helps bolster our Tier One is the recruitment of teachers who love kids and keep kids at the center of all of their decision-making. So I'm blessed to be the Principal at PRS, and I'm just fortunate to be here with you. Thank you.
I would just add one other thing, because Michelle wouldn't say it, but she is also an amazing instructional leader. And as we all know, next to the classroom teacher, the next most important person in the building is the principal. And Michelle sets a clear vision for her school, as you can hear, a commitment to all students, and then provides the support that her staff needs in order to be successful. So that has been a critical component of their success as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us. Congratulations to you and your entire team, school community, to the learners, to the parents. This is wonderful to have you with us today. Questions? Good morning.
Morning.
Not much of a question, just more of a comment. I wanted the comments that you made, Principal Dixon.
Yeah.
Try to raise your hand.
Yep.
The Tier One is just so important. It's so nice to hear that that's where your focus is, on the Tier One instruction. And in particular, your sharing of the goals with students. I'm glad that you said that publicly, because I think that's just so important, that we so often, as educators, looked at goals and scores and so forth, and forgot the very one person that they should be shared with. So thank you for that, and congratulations.
Thank you.
The same question, and what's next? Where are you leaning in? What are your challenges?
I'm glad I'm second, because I got to think about that. And I turned 50 a couple of weeks ago, so the teachers are a really important part of my life right now. So obviously, the work around recruitment of staff just continues to be a top priority, making sure that who we are bringing on board is representative of our very diverse school. And then just along the same line, our equity work has been amazing over the last few years, and just continuing to work with our staff and also provide materials to our students, providing access to them with materials that represent who they are. And we do have a really diverse population, and one of the things that we want to focus on is making sure that all of the books that we have in our school really represent our families. And then finally, my friend Brian back there, who's at Skinner Road School just in Vernon, next door, his school's being recognized for closing the achievement gap. And so that's really part of our work. I'm friends with Karen Cookish, who's a principal in Whiting Lane, and Brian, and we're going to be visiting each other's schools to learn from one another, because Whiting Lane was a Blue Ribbon school last year. Both our schools that are being recognized for closing the achievement gap. So I'm excited to learn more about what they're doing, so that I can bring those great innovations to PRS and to South Windsor.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're wonderful.
And Principal Dixon, to add to that, and I'm looking at Ajit, because we talked about how do we get our Blue Ribbon schools, and all these schools is doing well to work together, and to be able to share their practices, and so others can learn from that as well. So we're with you on developing that next step. And I also so appreciate giving our students voice and agency, a big believer in student voice. And I'll never forget the student who, some years ago, said, "I didn't realize when they were talking about the achievement gap, that they were talking about me." Think about the power of that information. And so to be able to talk to students and have them understand their role in space and set goals, so important. And so just amplifying the student voice, a piece of what you're doing is so important. So thank you very much. And again, we're here to be right by your side, to showcase the work that you have for others to see, and to continue to support you to even go further. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and you're welcome anytime.
Thank you.
On that note of learning from other schools, I want to also acknowledge our Deputy Commissioner, Charlie Hughes, who's been really pushing us to visit current schools of distinction that may have higher rates of student need, and trying to learn from them to see what are the kinds of things they're doing. And some of the themes that we're hearing today, we are hearing in those conversations as well. I don't know if you.
Thank you, Ajit. Yeah, you, he said it best. We're trying to learn from those who are having success, trying to identify those names. And we look forward to sharing that out, as they've already asked us, because we've made a few visits already, saying, hey, can you share with us what the other schools are doing and what their secret sauce is? So we look forward to continuing that work as we make our way through the new year.
And it is wonderful to see the, that unbeknownst to us, which is great, that you're actually talking to each other and exchanging ideas. That's wonderful. That is kind of a multiplicative effect that we want to promote. All right, we have two more schools. Third, we'll hear from Skinner Road School in Vernon. They've been identified for exemplary achievement gap closing. And we'll hear from Superintendent Joe McCary, and also from Brian Karaschke.
Karaschke.
Karaschke, Principal of Skinner Road School. I know their Board Chair is here as well, which I'll leave Superintendent Joe behind.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, before you start, I just want to introduce Dr. McCary, who is Connecticut's Superintendent of the Year.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Now she's making me cut off script, but that's okay. So the Superintendent of the Year is not an individual award, it's a team effort award. So if it wasn't for the students, the teachers, the parents, the administrators, the Board of Education, I wouldn't be here today. So thank you for that. I do want to introduce Brian Karaschke, who's the principal at Skinner Road School. I also have with us today Paul Grabowski, who's right behind us, who is our Board Chair. So I'm glad that he's here to be with us. I want to give you a little context of where we are with Skinner Road School, just so you can get an idea of what's happening. So Skinner Road School serves 320 students, pre-K through five. 60% of our students are designated as high-needs, which means they're either special needs, free reduced lunch, or EL population. So those are 60% of our students. Skinner Road is one of five elementary schools in Vernon, an alliance district that we're proud of. And we're actually, this is the second district school in four years that's been named a Blue Ribbon. Northeast School was a Blue Ribbon in 2020. The school accountability index, Ajit will appreciate this, was, last year was 82.8. So if you look at the numbers, that's pretty significant on where we are. I like to say that Vernon is a microcosm of the state of Connecticut. If you were to take the entire state of Connecticut and put it into a district, it would be Vernon. What do I mean that? Demographically, racial lines, gender, equity, poverty. We have urban, we have suburban, we have rural. For four years in a row, Skinner Road School has been a school of distinction. So this doesn't just happen overnight, it's a culmination of it all. But for being a Blue Ribbon school, for closing the achievement gap, is like an Olympic gold medal. I mean, that's what we're here about. That's why you spend all these hours here. We want to close the achievement gap. We want to do what's best for kids. We also want to make sure that we move forward and take care of all the students. Vernon is an alliance district, one of 36 alliance districts in the state. I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the diversity that we have in Vernon. I'm proud of the student voice that we have in Vernon. But more importantly, we use this as a partnership. So as you know already from alliance districts, we meet with our alliance districts representatives. We're fortunate to have Iris White. We have, not weekly, we do have sometimes weekly texts. But, no, come to the school, she visited Skinner Road School already, so she's learning from what's happening. We already have conversations about, you know, these are the programs we want to do. This is how we want to make this happen. So it's been a great partnership with the state for alliance funding, and that's allowed us, along with other funding, to concentrate on three areas. One is professional development for teachers, making sure that it's job embedded, and Brian leads that work. Hiring interventionists. Not every single student gets into your classrooms in kindergarten on the same level. They're all on different levels. So hiring those interventions are critical. And then having high-quality curriculum is important. And I think that's where we're headed and where we're going. So I think, before I turn it over to Brian, teachers matter, and leadership matters.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me, and I'm proud to represent Skinner Road School here, the town of Vernon, the Board of Education, and all my colleagues back in Vernon. I have two fun facts for you. One is that actually, Principal Dixon talked about it a little bit. PRS and Skinner Road are actually 1.2 miles apart from each other. So for us to be here together today is very special. I actually live in South Windsor as well, so I congratulate them and all the other schools as well, and the work that we're doing. The other one, I think, is a little bit more important, is that, as Ajit said, there are 330 schools that are recognized for being Blue Ribbons. Only 43 schools close the achievement gap out of those 330. The rest are high-performing. So congratulations to the other Connecticut school that has done that, and the other 41 schools in the rest of the country. So just think about that for a second, the work that's being done. So really proud to be one of those 43 schools that has done that work. When I came to Skinner Road seven years ago, I think, we had a mission statement, and that mission statement had a lot of commas, and it had a lot of things that were being said. And when we looked at it, those are all the right things that we wanted, but we really wanted to put it down to what we believe in, and that's culture. And that's around, every kid gets love, gets care, gets valued, and we trust them. So that's what all the teachers come in every day. We always talk about at Skinner Road School, it's a fresh start. So with that being said, over the last four years, we talk about teacher retention. 95% of my teachers have come back from 2019 till now. So there's nothing more that says consistency, sustainability, to all the systems and places that we're trying to go with our kiddos, than keeping teachers in place and feeling good about themselves. So I'm very proud of the work, and I will say this now, that I did to celebrate our teachers. Every Friday, we celebrate our teachers. Every chance we get, we celebrate our teachers. And the other way I celebrate my teachers is giving them the time that I believe, that we believe, is the right work to do. So they get over between 400 and 500 minutes a week of planning time. And so for the work that we want to do to do that, we are creative with our schedule, we are creative with the ways we want to get to make sure that we can respond to each and every child, because they deserve that. So those are the things that I think are really important, that have really moved, it's been a key lever in the work that we've done to become a school of distinction, and now a national Blue Ribbon school. So I appreciate you having us today. I'm appreciating, you know, I'm very proud to be here for our teachers, and I appreciate the work that you're doing every day for us as well. So thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Mr. Board Chair, thank you for joining as well. That support is fundamentally essential to the work that's happening here. This is very exciting to have upfront models of what it looks like to close the gap. There's something going on up there in that 1.2 mile radius that is special, and we're very happy to have you here. What are you leaning in on next?
Yeah, so actually, some of the work that we're doing, Ajit talked to it a little bit, and Principal Dixon talked to it. We were coming from kind of like a reverse trial, if you think about the MTSS system. So actually, all of our kids are starting to achieve at such high levels that we're actually really gearing our Tier One intervention to push our kids forward. You know, that's been the big part. We're now, not only do we respond to all kids, but now all of our kids are starting to shift, and we're seeing that shift over the last three to four years. So now we're really trying to make sure that the rigor is meeting the needs of all of our students. That's so important for us right now, and that's the work where we believe that's going to take us to the next Blue Ribbon in five years. As a high-performing school.
Wonderful.
Congratulations, Superintendent. You mentioned you have a lot of English learners in the school. And I wonder, could you talk about how you're succeeding in ensuring that the English learners are English?
So we, you know, as Brian said earlier, we use a multi-tiered support system model. So we have English learner centers in Vernon throughout, to make sure that we give those students the needed interventions they need, not just for their language ability, but also for their reading and math ability. So for example, at Skinner Road School, we have three dedicated reading intervention and two dedicated math interventionist. And I was at the school the other day, as part of my regular walkthroughs and going through, one where they do their small group instruction time, which is, you know, you can call it a wind block or whatever. It's all hands on deck. Every single person is working on it in that grade level, including the English learners. So I think the model works, exposure to the curriculum is important, but then also giving them the interventions that every other student gets.
Good morning. Good to see you here.
Good to see you again.
I applaud the collaboration that you're having with other districts. You know, I saw that at the end of my education career, and I always thought like, why didn't this happen in the first 30 years of education? Because I think that's key, maybe to learn from each other, especially such good, you know, strategies and so forth. So I've always been so impressed, as you know, with Vernon, you know, with the county coming front of us and for accountability for the alliance district. It is no surprise to me, Dr. McCary, that you are Superintendent of the Year, so congratulations. And I loved your comments about teachers matter and that leadership matters, because that's really where it all is. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Wrapping it up, but thank you again, and so appreciate the statement about giving teachers talent, which we know is so important that they have it. And so you show value to them, and we know, who doesn't want to feel valued for the work that we do? And so thank you for doing that. And just to reiterate, having you as Superintendent or Principal, and the local Board Chair together here also demonstrate that triad, that it's so important to do this work together. So again, thank you very much. We're going to be here, Dr. McCary, to support the work that you're doing every single day.
We appreciate it, thank you.
We'll see you in five years.
And our fourth school is the Stanford Charter School for Excellence. And they have been identified as an exemplary achievement gap closing school. And we will hear from Charlene Reed, the Co-CEO of Excellence Community Schools, and Kevin Fisher, the Principal of the Stanford Charter School for Excellence. And Charlene Reed, please.
Congratulations.
Good morning, Commissioner, Chair, Vice Chair, all members of the board. This is coming full circle for me, because usually when I'm sitting in front of you guys, I'm asking for something, and being told I can't have it. And then we get it. So 10 years when I discovered that there was a huge achievement gap in Stanford, Connecticut, and we had a school in the Bronx, and I said, I think I can open up a school in Connecticut to address the same achievement gap. And I met with, at the time, Representative Miller. And she was like, I don't know about a charter school, but let's talk more about this. And I explained to her our model, which Mr. Fisher will share with everyone here. I explained just my passion, and she was a little hesitant, and she said, okay, you got to prove this to me. And we started on this journey. And we started on this journey, and that was ten years ago. And so I'm here to say thank you. It's been a tough experience, but it's all worth it, especially because I wanted to close the achievement gap. And so I cried when we were nominated for closing the achievement gap, because we all together stayed on the course. What you see in Stanford Excellence is a true community school, and so I don't believe we could do this work without every member of the community, without the parents who are invested, without our state legislators, without the local businesses. Stanford Excellence is the only school on the west side of Connecticut, on Stanford, Connecticut. The schools, you know, through history were moved into another area, so that neighborhood did not have an elementary school. And so being able to have a school, a local school, neighborhood school, where kids can some walk to school, I felt was important. I also felt it was important, because when you have a school in the neighborhood, the neighborhood changes. And we've been able to see change, because now there's investment in the neighborhood. So that's super important for all of us and our parents' community development, and also partnering and working with Stanford School District. I have a great relationship with Dr. Lucero, and so I'm just overjoyed. The only piece of sadness here is that I'm not here to celebrate this with my brother, Q. Williams. And so he was our community engagement manager, he worked, the three of us, we did the triad to open up the school, started from scratch. And so one of our last conversations, he said, we're going to do this. He was like, we got this, you know, like, just get ready for Washington, D.C., he was like, we're going to do this. And so we were heartbroken, and just a strange story, the day of, Kevin, if you can share what was, what happened?
So the day of the award ceremony, I wake up at four-thirty, because I'm sure we all can't sleep, but I look at my phone, and I have a reminder from Namely, which is an app we used to use for clocking in and HR and things like that, and it was a reminder that Quentin Spitz's birthday was on November twenty-fourth. So Q. Williams, wherever he is right now, was telling me, I'm still here with you, and we did this together, so that app hasn't worked in five years, so.
We don't know why he got that email. We have not used that app, we don't use that payroll system, but for some reason, he got that email in the morning, and we were like, okay, you're here, I see you're here. So that is the only sadness that I experienced, that he's not here physically to celebrate with us. And then I'll pass over to Kevin, so he can talk a little bit about our school.
We opened Stanford Excellence in 2015 with the belief that every child should have access to high-quality education, regardless of where you live, your economic status, how disadvantaged you are, especially in that area of Stanford that's historically underserved. We opened in 2015, pre-K to first grade, with a hundred and sixty-eight students. Last year, we graduated our first eighth-grade class, we've grown to five hundred and sixty students, pre-K to eighth grade, which was really special, seeing those first graders that started with us eight years ago, and being able to give them options for high school. It wasn't just the two options that are in Stanford, they went boarding, public, Catholic, private, their eyes were open to all these different options that were out there for them. And, you know, we're going to continue to do that with every graduating class, and we're going to track them through high school as well, because, you know, then that option comes. Part of our mission is college wasn't an option, it was just a question of which one you want to go to. Our classes are named after universities and colleges all throughout the country every year, so it's not Mr. Fisher's class or Dr. Reed's class, it's Yale, it's Duke, it's New Haven, it's Hampton. So they know from that early age of four, when they're in pre-K, that which college am I going to go to by the time I leave here? And then some of the key design elements, you know, of our school is, obviously, we have very high academic standards, as many other schools spoken about, it's data-driven, we're constantly looking at data and test scores and how they're doing, and what can we change, and what do we have to reteach, or we do have a longer school day, you know, our kids do wear uniforms, which they don't like, but it helps them focus, because they come to learn and nothing else. So we're not worrying about who's got what Jordans on, or which Nike tech fleece, and, you know, we have a strong commitment to academic performance accountability, not only for the parents and the students and the teachers, it's a, you know, as Dr. Reed talked about, it truly is a community element to it. We have heavy parent engagement, you know, because they're their first teacher, they're their first educator, so they have to be involved as much as we are. And, you know, it's a life, we want to have a strong commitment to lifetime, lifelong learners, so they understand, and, you know, as Ajit talked about, we always can get better at something, we can always improve upon something, and that's something that we constantly preach to them.
Thank you so much, and thank you for lifting up our friend you, it's been ever in this building today to celebrate this, so congratulations, it's wonderful to hear and it's wonderful to sit with and hear from you, Dr. Reed, as the visionary of what would be at this point right now. What's next, what are you working on?
To continue with, I call it phase two, where we're working on, continue to build up the community surrounding the school, so working with, continuing to work with local businesses, partnering around economic partnerships, grants. It now goes to this next level, where we're sitting around like, okay, how do we impact policy? How do we work together to change for the better of the neighborhood and the community? Working with the church that we lease our school with, working with the district to see if there are more partnerships that we can take on to help all students in Stanford, and hopefully later on Connecticut, as we continue to outreach and partner with other schools and other districts.
Other board members, any questions?
My namesake, so that works. I'm really so thrilled to see you sitting here and the work that you've done, and you've talked, several times you both mentioned families and parents in what you've talked about, and the fact that we know the school, the family, and the community are so important for student outcome and success. Our students come into schools every day, they live in families, and they are part of communities. And so it makes sense that all those are working together to support them. And so, so important that that is happening, that you're highlighting that, and another area that I think I'd like to augment and amplify for other school districts as well, that is so important, that the family and community, they are a part of the work that's being done. So thank you very much, thank you for being here under these circumstances, for us highlighting the work that you've done, and again, we're here to continue to support you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That includes our presentation. I want to thank all four schools for coming up today and for giving us all the hope and the belief that it is possible, and it can be done in any school, anywhere in the state. So thank you.
Thank you, and before you run out, we would love to get a picture with all of the schools, so we'll take a quick break to do that. Congratulations. to bring us back together. And we will return to our agenda, there was no reason for executive session today. So at this point, we'll move to item four A on the agenda, and the Chair will introduce a motion to approve the November first, 2023 State Board of Education meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you. Been moved in properly seconded. Are there any nearly changes? All good, all of them favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, I have already done my report, so we will move to item six. For the Commissioner, what I understand means some amazing agency updates today, so we're using this time to highlight a number of things and the hard work that's been happening in the district. So Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Chair Robinson and Vice Chair, and all our board members, I hope you're all enjoying the season, lots happening and a lot of work, as you mentioned. And my full report, I'm going to start my report to you as a new look this month, because we're beginning to make sure that we're addressing the new war goals. So right in front of us is, are we students prepared for life of learning and working on school? And the report is kind of organizing that manner as well. I'm going to get started, though, with the reports that I wanted to bring to all of you, the agency reports, and then I'll end up with just highlighting a few things from my report. We are working on three presentations to you today, beginning with some more details and information on the right to read legislation and the work that we've done there, you've got our press release on that, then we'll have a special education update, and the Senate Office specifically talking to updating you on where we are about statewide efforts on recruiting and retention. And the team have a lot to share, we can't do it all today, so we will break that up into some meetings coming, upcoming meetings. But I want to start with the K3 reading labor update, and I'm going to ask the team that's going to be presenting to take their places. I just want to start, though, we've heard from Representative Curry, we've heard from Senator Miller, we've heard from Amy Dowell, who may still be in the room, our folks that we've worked with, we've heard from our district about the importance of core instruction, and I just have to go back to something again, not scripted, but after listening to Senator Miller today, and I still remember vividly the hearings that we were at when they were talking about, legislators were talking about this legislation, and the center wanted to get that up to the agency, and I volunteered, I told them that I think the agency should take this on, it is important work. And I'll tell you the why, and you'll see this in the presentation, based on our 2023 data, fifty-four point five percent, approximately nineteen thousand five hundred students in the third grade are not proficient, means they're not reading on grade level. Over eight thousand of them are English learners, multilingual learners, are receiving special education, the remaining eleven thousand are under leadership. And then when we look at the other information, three thousand of them are Black African-American, over eight thousand are Hispanic or Tino, and over sixty-six hundred are white. The bottom line is, this is something that we have to work on consistently across the state and across all our school districts. So for me, Senator, that was the why, it wasn't even an afterthought, that this is work, because if we do nothing differently, this is the numbers, just about the numbers we're producing year after year. That is not acceptable, and we've got to do something about it. And so it is that commitment with the team that we've been doing this work, and so today I want them to just share with you kind of what got us here, where we are, and we're not done, this is really the beginning, because we recognize a proven program, a proven core one instruction, that is just a part of it. We need to make sure that our educators or teachers have the skills that they need, and that we're there with them along the way for this long haul, and I have so confidence that working together will get the results that we're looking for. So that is the why, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to the team to just update you, we talked about this in previous meetings, but to let you know where we are and where we're headed. So to the team.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell Tucker, and good morning to the board. I want to, again, amplify the message and the why that Senator Miller so eloquently shared before we all sat down to speak here with you. It really is at the core of the legislation and at the heart of the work that we're attempting to do at the State Department of Education in support of our districts implement the programs or curricula that align with the legislation. So as you can see on the first slide that we have for you here, the data that our Commissioner has shared, the staggering numbers of our grade-three students who are not yet proficient in reading and English Language Arts. See the breakdown by demographics and identifying that these students really do exist in all of our Connecticut districts and schools. It's important to remember that, that this legislation aims to support our districts to move forward with the materials that will engage students in this instruction that supports them achieving in reading. I'm going to borrow from a very revered educational researcher here and say, Dr. John Hattie, Professor Emeritus, and again, researcher in the field, everything we do in education has an impact on students, but some things that we do has a greater impact. And I think that's really critical to notice, because when we talk about the science of reading and what the legislation outlines in the areas of reading, we know from a quarter century of research compiled over empirical studies, that kids learn to read in a certain way. And when we have systematic instruction that follows that method, we can support all kids, ninety-five percent, you heard before, ninety-five percent of our students reach that goal, and that's the aspiration of this legislation. If you can move to the next slide.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hughes. I also want to say thank you to Senator Miller, Rep. Curry, and Amy Dowell for their unwavering support along the way. As Commissioner Russell Tucker said, it does take a community, and a community working together, and I feel so blessed to have a Commissioner who is dedicated to positive outcomes for each and every child. I'm also so blessed to have a board who has made it a priority in your strategic plan for literacy. You have all been so supportive over the eight years that I've been here, and I cannot thank you enough for that. Also want to give a shout-out to my colleagues, none of this work could have been done, so I appreciate, and I got very embarrassed by the kind words said about me, but do know that there are a team, including the two people sitting to my right, and a brand-new team sitting over here to my left. And because of that- John Hattie, Professor Emeritus, and again, researcher in the field. Everything we do in education has an impact on students, but some things that we do has a greater impact. And I think that's really critical to notice, because when we talk about the science of reading and what the legislation outlines in the areas of reading, we know from a quarter century of research compiled over empirical studies, that kids learn to read in a certain way. And when we have systematic instruction that follows that, that method, we can support all kids. Ninety-five percent, you heard before, ninety-five percent of our students reach that goal. And that's the aspiration of this legislation. If you can move to the next slide.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hughes. I also want to say thank you to Senator Miller, Rep. Curry, and Amy Dowell for their unwavering support along the way. As Commissioner Russell Tucker said, it does take a community and a community working together. And I feel so blessed to have a Commissioner who is dedicated to positive outcomes for each and every child. I'm also so blessed to have a board who have made it a priority in your strategic plan for literacy. You have all been so supportive over the eight years that I've been here, and I cannot thank you enough for that. Also want to give a shout out to my colleagues. None of this work could have been done, so I appreciate, and I got very embarrassed by the kind words said about me, but do know that there are a team, including the two people sitting to my right, and a brand new team sitting over here to my left. And because of them, we were able to meet with and talk to almost all districts and charter schools in Connecticut to help support them to date with their literacy needs. So I just wanted to say thank you. As you can see here, in October of 2022, I consulted with the council, we have a reading council, and reviewed programs. Now by law, we were supposed to put forward five programs. However, we did put forward seven. Now I do have to just step back from stuff to say the, had to know the legislation, the very first thing that had to happen was to have an establishment of the center. And our Commissioner did that immediately. She immediately said, I am establishing the center, and we got to work. So thank you again. I hope I'm not embarrassing you too much. So then we worked together with districts and stakeholders, because what we were noticing is that the turnaround date for districts to implement one of these approved programs was July of 2023. So we worked with the legislators and many of you to adjust that legislation to give everybody some more time until 2025. So that was a big win that we very much appreciated. From the legislation, not only were we charged with identifying new programs that are evidence-based, scientifically-based, but also districts were allowed to ask for a waiver to implement a program or curriculum other than something on the list. And we're going to talk a little bit more about what that entails on the next slide, please. Thank you. So we immediately moved again in December of 22, got to developing the waiver process with input from CAC, our Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent. As required by the legislation, the waiver must demonstrate that such other reading model or curriculum is evidence-based and scientifically-based and focused on certain areas of reading, which has been found once again, evidence-based, scientifically-based on the slide. Additionally, each waiver request had to include data, data collected from the assessment that were being utilized in the schools from the list of assessments on our group list. We actually had a couple lists that they were able to pull from, which we can explain more. But Commissioner Russell Tucker, all along the way, wanted to make this extremely transparent to all districts. So one of the things that we did was establish a website dedicated to the waiver process. And on that website listed resources, it listed the waiver tool, which we'll be talking about as well. But I just want you to know that one of the intents of the legislation of that waiver process was to have our districts and charter schools analyze their current curriculum instruction, to look at their student data, and to use those data to then make adjustments to their curriculum. And this occurred. We gathered tons of evidence for evidence. Some districts who were originally going to submit a waiver decided not to, based on its expectation. Then they started researching and piloting some of the approved materials. Three districts withdrew their submitted waiver applications, and many who submitted, as we were meeting and talking to them, actually started making changes in instructions as a result of this process of looking at instructions, looking at what their students were doing, and they also changed their assessment. We had just a few who were utilizing assessments that were not on our July twenty twenty nine, twenty nineteen or twenty twenty-three list, but right now they are. And because of that, they actually added to their instruction and listed up their phonics and phonemic instruction. So you may be hearing concerns, or you might hear concerns about the waiver process, and about those that met expectations during waivers, because there's low scores. Well, what we want you to know is that one of the districts, I'll just give a shout out to Harvard, what they did is they're not currently using what they put forward. They were brilliant, because they put forward materials they wanted to use and then used our experts at PCG, which Dr. Hughes will talk more about, used the experts to look at what they wanted, what they were proposing before moving forward. So they had to change their data and make changes. That was the word I'll do. Just want to be, okay, I guess I've kind of hit on everything. Is there anything that I forgot, Dr. Hughes, that you want to? All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hughes again.
Thank you, Dr. Hickey. So to speak to the waiver process, you can move forward one slide. Thank you. So back in May of 2023, the State Department of Ed contracted with Public Consulting Group, PCG, you've heard that already. It was very important, and to the brilliance of the, my colleagues who sit before you prior to I, my arrival, it was really important to identify a group that had the expertise to conduct this review, but also one that was, would not bring bias into the equation, one that was external, kind of a, we refer to this in the research world as a blind review, right? They had no stake in the game as to how these outcomes of the, the review occurred. And so moving forward, they, they needed to construct some sort of a tool, a review process and metric to be able to determine whether or not an individual district's waiver submission was in alignment with all of the areas that had already been discussed prior to, specifically oral language, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, rapid, automatic name and letter name fluency, and reading comprehension. So amongst the documents that were submitted, the videos, the, the data, PCG was going to utilize a tool to, to identify where a district's program met or did not meet those criteria. But it goes beyond just, there, there are compilation of areas from which this design tool was built. First Senate Bill 1202, the right to read, the twenty-two guidelines for open review period for grades pre-kindergarten to three, reading curriculum and programs, the waiver application guidance that Dr. Hickey said was posted, Public Act 23, 167. There were a lot of components that had to be brought forward, so this tool had to be constructed so that a very close evaluation could occur to ensure compliance. The review tool really provided that structure from which then the State Department of Education, we could make our determination as to whether or not a district submitted waiver was meeting the, the rigorous criteria that's in alignment with the research and the evidence in terms of reading instruction. I want to point out beyond just the categories or the areas as we're referring to it, the areas of reading that align with the legislation, a district's program had to also show some synergy. It had to work together. We had to have frequent opportunities, and, and the reviewers had to look for frequent opportunities where students had the chance to learn a new skill, practice that skill, get to mastery. It had to build over, over the years. It could not just be an isolated one-year type of structure. It had to continually build upon the skills year over year. These are really nuanced components that went into the waiver evaluation. So once PCG started to collect the, the waivers and review them through June and August, they conducted that review using that review tool. And then we, we arrive at ultimately October and November, and what we had heard resoundingly from districts is we want more communication with the State Department of Ed and PCG. So we actually added a step in response to the need of districts to communicate about their submission, and we set up one-on-one meetings. And Dr. Hickey, along with PCG, met with seventy-six districts who had requested that to allow them to fill out more of their explanations of their program. A really important piece of that was PCG actually organized and provided feedback in advance to the district. So, hey, we're curious about what you, how your vocabulary component is systematic instruction over the years of, of K through three. And that way, the district could then tailor that discussion to provide more evidence as appropriate. And then ultimately by December, as, as was noted earlier in the day, the results of the reviews went out to districts, and, and here we are sharing the, the outcome. So if you move on to the next slide, we can start to talk a little bit about those outcomes. And so rather than a binary result, a you met everything or you did not meet anything, we, we decided to create a tiered approach. And I want to recognize the hard work of our superintendents and their leadership within their districts, who have really, as Dr. Hickey shared, made changes as a result of this legislation. So let's honor two things here. First, the legislation being landmarked to make sure that all of our students have these opportunities, and its urgency, its stimulus in our districts to support them achieve and realize that goal. So our districts have been working very hard, but we did recognize in the review process that there were districts who were partially the way there. So seventeen met fully that criteria. The partially had a designation, that they just had to add a component. They may have missed, you know, systematic instruction in vocabulary, and they just need to add instruction therein. Transitional districts need to add and probably substitute something within their existing program to really match the legislation. And the limited, there was not enough evidence to show that they were going to completely fall and come into alignment with the legislation. And so in addition to the outcome results that you see in front of you, we also did a lot of learning and, and identified the, the good things that districts are doing, but also some of the areas that we as the State Department of Education, as the Commissioner had identified before, and really support the professional learning that is so important for implementation of these program and curricula that are aligned with the science. And so I want to kind of share or ask Dr. Hickey to share some of those outcomes in terms of the opportunities for PD, or more specifically, the additions of those programs that we also learned from our districts.
All right, thank you very much. Could you move into the next slide? So I just really want to reiterate from what Dr. Hughes said, we really leaned in, as Rep. Curry said, and we gave districts so many opportunities to provide evidence that what they submitted on their curriculum model or their compilation program, that they were coherent, comprehensive, evidence-based, scientifically-based, and focused on the areas of competency as listed in the legislation. It was really exciting, because as Dr. Hughes said, we did have some additional comprehensive programs or curriculum models, as well as competing with documents that were submitted and added to the list. So the legislation did ask the state to have five designated. Like I said, we had seven. Now we have nineteen, nineteen choices, and the majority of, actually all of them have come from districts submitting information that we would then obviously review, triangulate our data. We are not the only state, even though we are one of the more advanced states in this area. So we also relied on our partners in Colorado and Massachusetts to see how they were reviewing programs as well, so triangulating these data. So that was one really exciting thing we were able to add to the list. Another, as we said, districts started changing their practice and incorporating assessments that are on our July 2023 approved list. And from these changes, they've already seen a difference in student growth and in what they're doing structurally. The one-on-one meetings were amazing. I mean, if you like research or action research, this is what they were. We learned so much from districts and heard just so many amazing things. In the process, it was revealed that there are some needs, there are some confusions, and we need to be providing professional learning to support people with the transition and understanding why they're doing these transitions. We have talked about one of the, one of the shifts in instruction would be word walls. Now on your tours, I'm sure you've seen lots of word walls. In the younger grades, it's nice to use a sound wall. So you have the sounds up there, and they can see what letters are making those sounds. It's that visual representation of the sounds of letters to help them develop those phonics skills. And we also noticed a need for support around systematic lesson plans. Lesson plans that really focus on skills through that lens, as Dr. Hughes said, of that structured sequential approach. Also inquiry versus direct instruction. There are times that we really need to do direct instruction, and one of those times is reading. So that's something that we need to provide a professional learning on, how to provide a step-by-step guidance to ensure that students are getting these essential literacy skills.
Thank you very much. So talking about some of those bright spots, you can already hear the opportunities that exist for the state of Connecticut as we start to move forward with this. And to illustrate a few more bright spots beyond what Dr. Hickey has shared, you know, identifying the fact that our educators have this reflective practice across the state and are, and are saying, you know what, I think we really do need to relook at these parts of our instruction to strengthen them. So there's a growing eagerness to learn, which, which really is commendable for our professionals across the state. We want to recognize that there are actually over a hundred districts who report to us having pilot, piloted, researching, adopting any of these approved comprehensive curriculum models or programs already. So that's essentially more than half of our districts across the state. And to support, as Rep. Curry had mentioned before, the twenty-four million that was allocated to support the funding for districts to purchase either these materials or the professional learning that is associated with those materials, to make sure that districts don't have an unfunded mandate, if you will, but also his commitment to say that we want to advance that further, to recognize that there's still room and opportunity to do so. And ultimately, so what are our next steps? Where do we go from here? We already identified that it is critical, the professional learning of our educators across the, the, the state essentially, to say, we need to provide you with support, we need to provide you with the knowledge for implementation. We want to continue with our colleagues here that work with the Office of Dyslexia and Reading Disabilities to support the reading initiatives that are being pushed across the state to support our kids, and ultimately to study the impact. So that last line that you see there, the evaluate the ARPA Right to Read Grant impact with CERC, to identify how these products, materials are, are having an impact in our districts in order to then be, have, have raised awareness how to adjust and continue the work that is so important to our students. So I want to thank you very much. Any remaining?
I can say thank you. I also want to kind of bring up what Vice Chair Benham said, and the Principal Michelle Dixon, it's all about that tier one instruction, all about that tier one instruction. And please be assured that we are operating with a variety of support, as Dr. Hughes said. We initially rolled out the ARPA Right to Read Grant through the kindness of our legislators and Senator Miller. They did allocate to us over twenty-four million dollars. Twenty million of that has gone to districts. So far, every single district has received funds that they can utilize if they so wish. If they do, they would use it for the purchase of the approved programs, approved assessments, and professional learning to support them once they. One of the things about taking the ARPA fund is that they also have to participate in once-in-a-month professional learning. This professional learning is providing guiding and coaching into creating literacy plans for the district. Another source, as you know, it's really important to our Commissioner, that we support our small towns. And so often they do get overlooked simply because they don't have a lot of numbers for students. So we were able to pull some ARPA S R funding, over four point five million, to support the district of under one thousand students, so they could buy additional materials. And actually with the ARPA, ARPA S R funds, pardon, they're actually able to pay teachers and subs as well to cover for professional learning. The others are, we have a lot of professional learning that's going to be coming. As I said, we work closely with our partner in state. Massachusetts has two organizations that rose to the top in their RSE process, and we are currently contracting with them to assist our town and district here in our charter schools. In addition, we're working with the rest so that they can be bringing together districts and providing coaching and support and professional learning. And what's that, Commissioner?
Well, thank you so much. And just a shout out to the team. What you see here, it's late hours, it's night, it's weekend, it's been twenty-four seven, and I'm thanking them for picking up my calls on the weekends and early mornings. And I'm thanking them for picking up my calls on the weekends and early mornings as well because this is really important. This is not just an exercise and we know we talk about this, this is the legislation. But I hope you hear that we center the outcome of our students and supported all our districts to be able to make this happen. So I wanted to thank our superintendents and their support. We listened to them. When they came back and said we needed something, we worked to make sure we adjusted the process. We went to one meeting and they said, there's these webinars, but we really want to know what's going... It's not just you turning the paper. I want to know from the instructor, how am I doing? Do I need to make other changes? And so we adjusted, along the way as we heard from them, we adjusted the process so that we could be responsive and that we're doing this together. So I really wanted to do that. The other thing I want you to hear is this issue of literacy, it's not just in that area of work in the agency, it is across the agency. So in this room, I know we have our Bureau Chief for our new Office of Dyslexia, it's here. That's a part of the work and staffing them to do that. And I know Melissa King out there have a team because the folks sitting over there, the board will appreciate, those are all folks who are new to the agency. We probably met in six months here. Now they got into, one of them had dysentery, it was like 9:30 at night to help him do the work. So anyway, that is the work that we're doing. And I just really want to say across the board, thanking the team for this and the commitment because it is that important for the outcomes that we're looking for. So with that, I really wanted you to get a sense of this process. So as you hear and you get questions, you understand the commitment to transparency, the flexibility, the responsiveness that we've all engaged in this process. So what questions do you have? Thank you to the team.
So board members, I know we all know similarly that we want to commend that this has been a big lift and that this is the beginning of a process and there is much to do. This is a metric we will keep our eye on at the board and will expect regular updates around. What are the outcomes? What are we learning? And one of the important things that the Commissioner has led on is making sure that any place that SRR dollars were spent is connected with the evaluation piece. So that's going to be important for us and as we continue to look at the impact of this work. So we'll continue with a focus on this. But thank you for getting us to this point. Board members, question? Yes, Mr. Bennett.
Well, thank you and welcome and thank you for this great work. Dr. Hughes, I appreciate that you mentioned the superintendents and recognizing their hard work. You know, it's an initiative like this that makes districts take that deep dive and realize that, you know, we need to do, we need to look closer. And I know this has got to be one of the first initiatives that they have gotten so much assistance with. I mean, seventy-six one-on-one meetings, I mean, that's unheard of. I mean, that's not the largest district. I mean, that's just amazing to me. The other day with our call, I was very pleased to hear the rollout in the tier. I thought that was the super great role we've done. It's very transparent. It shows all the other districts who they can go to, other than the amazing staff here. But it also, you've got a chance to all the districts that might be right next door to ask those questions and I think that's just so important that was done. So I applaud you. I just think this is, you know, the efforts that you put into this are really fantastic. And I know it's been a long, long road and, you know, we'll hear a lot of complaints and some negative attached to this, but I think it's very important that we just concentrate the positive. Change is always hard and the confusion between programs and curriculums. But you really have set that out there that people understand that there is a difference between those two things. So I applaud you and thank you for all that work. Thank you very much.
And I just have to thank you and Mr. Ashley. I kind of felt at times a little engine I couldn't. And because of you two, you really gave me a lot of the power to become the engine I could. So thank you so much. I think all the board members, but I do have to say these two in particular really did reach out to me. So thank you both.
So thank you for this. I still appreciate the cheering and I appreciate something you said, Dr. Hughes, earlier in the quote that she used, that there, everything we do has an impact but some things have a greater impact. And so I encourage all districts who maybe didn't get their approval in the way they might have thought and think they're doing something good. Like imagine what more we can be doing for students when we are all aligned and getting on the same page and learning from what the data tells us. It's really this helpful approach. So thank you all. I know we have other departmental invitations. I'm going to let the board move us on to the Bureau of Special Education, but we'll hear much more from you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And another thing that we wanted to update you on, give you a little bit more information on special education from Brian Kirkley. And you've all learned to talk about CT-Seds and some of those kinds of things as well. So I've asked Brian just to do really a brief update. There's more information to get on special education. We've got a grant, over $5 million grant across the federal government to assist us. And so again, Brian had a lot to say and just because of timing today, we've, I got Brian down to probably six slides just to do that. Which is really discussion because of everything. But you'll get more information in upcoming meetings. With that, Brian?
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Board, Chair, Vice Chair, and the entire Board. Great to be here with you. So appreciate the opportunity to give an update today. And, you know, an awesome responsibility that we have as a state is to ensure federal and special education state law is implemented across all of our districts and all of our programs. We have an amazing team and as the Commissioner mentioned earlier, it's not only the Bureau of Special Education. We really rely on one another across our departments to ensure and to take on that accountability and responsibility. This graphic here, you know, it's a little difficult to see, but it represents eight different systems that we're responsible for around what's called general monitoring and supervision. So every state in our country is responsible and the Office of Special Education Programs, who we report to federally, expect that these systems are in place in every state. So I won't go through in depth today each of the components, but one of the pieces here is the State Performance Plan, where we report every February to the federal government on seventeen special education indicators across the state. Some of those are compliance, meaning procedural, you have to do these things. Others are results-based. And so we've talked a lot about literacy today. Our State Systemic Improvement Plan, which we've worked with a variety of stakeholders, is to ensure educational outcomes improve in reading for students with IEPs in grade three. So there definitely is alignment with what's happening across the state and we know that those, that the impact will be received and the support for all students. And so we're excited about that work. For our integrated monitoring, that's another component of our system, which I'll dive in a little bit deeper on. We are currently auditing thirty school districts around the quality of their IEPs and so, and around compliance with relation to annual reviews, three-year annual reviews. And so that's going to provide us a lot of valuable information on where additional support and training is needed across our districts. Now that we have a new system in place, are we realizing higher quality programming and plans for our students? Our data systems are phenomenal and really a leader. We are a leader in the country in so many different areas about the wealth of knowledge that we're able to bring real time now to the state level. Our dispute resolution processes, that includes formal complaints, mediation, and due process hearings. Connecticut is in the top five in the country for the volume of complaints received. So there's many different reasons for that. We are a state that has many attorneys and advocates and the presence of supporting students and families across the state. But also it demonstrates that we're making sure that our processes are communicated to families so they know if there are difficult, if there are difficulties or challenges that they're experiencing, that they can go to the state to have those resolved in a formal manner. So I do want to also thank Deputy Commissioner Sonya Mariano for her support and her leadership that she's brought to the, in being part of that leadership team. She's asking great questions and it's great to have that support and reflection in the communications with superintendents and building principals and leaders across the state. So we really appreciate that support. So the next slide is we have great news to share, which I didn't have a chance to share earlier and here with you. I mentioned the data that we report to OSIP on. Connecticut meets requirements in the implementation of IDA across the state of Connecticut. And that's a wonderful accomplishment. And thinking about some of the quotes we've heard today, the data tells the story and we are all authors of this. So this is a testament to the work that's happening at the local level and the state level. But we know the significant amount of challenges that we remain. So we celebrate that meets requirements. There are only twenty-three states in our country, believe it or not, that are meeting requirements with regard to the IDA. Most of the other states are either in need of assistance or need intervention. So although we do take pride in that distinction, we know there's a lot of work to be done and we don't rest until that continuous improvement is happening. But the designation is based on those compliance indicators and results-based indicators. And I can answer any questions that you may have about that as well. The next slide, I thought it was important to talk about how we address complaints. You heard earlier that we opened a Bureau of Special Education Call Center this year. It's been a wonderful success. It's a partnership with the Connecticut Parent Advocacy Center, our parent training and information center. And we're building our capacity to be able to field phone calls from parents and interested members of the community. We review that data on a monthly basis. And then also issues that need to rise to that second tier are communicated to our team at the Bureau of Special Education. Each of our consultants on our team represent a number of the school districts and so they would field those calls and then interact with the districts as appropriately to sort of proactively address issues before they reach formal dispute resolution, complaints and mediations and so forth. We have an internal team that represents those eight systems on that previous slide. So we come together as a smaller group to review call center data, internal complaints that are sent. We receive emails and phone calls throughout all of our offices that are fielded and we want to make sure that we're responsive and thorough in all of those. We also review public media reports on a daily basis. Those are sent through our department and our team, a member of our team is responsible for reviewing those on a regular basis and identifying any that may be related to the work that we do with students with IEPs. So again, happy to answer any questions around the programming with regard to our general monitoring and supervision, but really want to thank the team that I represent for all their hard work to keep these systems sustained and moving forward. I do have an update on CT-Seds for you all. The next slide is the third slide. So this year is the second year of implementation and we are happy to report that we're in a significantly better place than we were last year with the implementation. Having said that, we're not trusting on that fact. We had a meeting with PCG early on and again, meeting with their higher education folks and the conversation was about ensuring that this is not a system that people are just using and bearing with and getting through, that this is a system that is propelling their work, helping them to excel in their work and that they're 100% appreciative of the supports in place. And so we are definitely not at that point at this time. And so we're engaging in a number of mechanisms to continuously improve and gather feedback from the field. So this graph represents what's called a pulse survey. So the idea is we send this survey out to our educators a number of times through the year, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and the end of the year. Our first survey that went out, we sent through the superintendents and principals to share with their staff. We received over 1,700 respondents from a variety of roles. You can see from special education administrators, data managers, clerical support, administrative assistants, data experts, and special education teachers. And the second graph represents that we did receive input from our private schools as well as our public schools. Because the survey was administered recently, it just ended last, at the end of last month, we're still reviewing and analyzing the qualitative data that we found. But there are some important takeaways where we found input that the IEPs were of higher quality, that are much more parent-friendly. You heard from a few individuals today about translating documents. The system is translating documents into those top 10 languages in our state automatically right out of the system, although we're still working to expand that. And so, you know, seeing all of the documents in one location is also a benefit that was realized. Things that still need to improve are the progress reporting features in the system. Again, that ease of making sure that the data is filled in for student progress. The training around the process and as you heard last year, this is a process-based system, not a form completion system. And so there's still inequities and access to training around the state, which we are trusting. And then the turnaround for any system-related issues as well. And so we're working with PCG on analyzing that data. And then again, responding, we'll be sending out this survey again later in the year to document that improvement. Another area that we're looking at, we brought in New Solutions, which is a vendor from out of Boston, Massachusetts. They work with schools to understand special education teachers. We know in our state, we're dealing with a crisis around vacancies and valuing the profession and folks that are overwhelmed with a variety of requirements that they have. So this outside entity and our partners in New Solutions are working with twenty school districts that are random selection of representative of different geographical locations across the state and conducting focus groups with the administrators as well as the special education teachers to gather more information about why they are successful in the IEP process, including the use of the system and where their pain points are. They're going to codify that information for us and demonstrate to other districts the best practice strategies that they heard directly from the field. So we're very excited about that work moving forward and we'll be sharing those results with you throughout the year. The final slide I have to share with you is that you may have heard that we've trained not only on the use of the system, we've been training across the state on what it is to have a high-quality IEP. We've trained over 9,000 educators in the last two years to provide a foundation for the process-based system with more quality outcomes for our students. Our recent efforts were around those educators that have durational shortage, subjected to DFAP as well as long-term substitutes. I know districts are utilizing those at a greater frequency, those individuals, as they're looking to either finish their programs or support our students. And we are, this year, we're also piloting with districts the training for general education principals and principals because we know that, we heard earlier, the success around the Tier One instruction and supports. And we know the role, the critical role that principals and vice principals play. But happy to answer any questions, provide more detail in areas. And we're looking forward to sharing about the State Performance Development Grant that was awarded to the state, which will bring in $6 million close to, over the next five years to help us with the IEP quality rollout, specifically in the area of MAPS. So we're appreciative of the work that's been had.
Thank you for the clippings with, for this comprehensive overview. And for updates, we certainly asked the Board her concerns from districts about CT-Seds. I appreciate the work you've done with the vendor to address those concerns and that you're continuing to keep your eye on the satisfaction that our teams are having using the system. I appreciate that. I also want to call our attention back to the public comment earlier today. It was important to note that the system has to use reports in multiple languages. I hope that there'd be follow-up with the district that that, where that parent was representing. It doesn't sound like she's getting her reports in a language that is acceptable to her. Which leads to my question, the call center that you referenced, how is multilingual capacity addressed to the call center? What happens when a parent or a family member calls in speaking a language other than English? How would that handle?
Thank you for that question. So we have consultants that speak both English and Spanish on our call center. And if there's a language other than that, that's needed for our parents to use a language line so that there's a third party that comes into the conversation. And the parent, I had an opportunity to speak with a parent. She did clarify that she's receiving her IEP documents translated, but when a school psychologist or an occupational therapist does a report and writing the report and putting it into the system, that's... and writing the report and putting it into the system, that's not translated. So we need to figure out how we can incorporate that so that, you know, the difference would have to translate those to put them into the system. So she did clarify that.
Understood, important preparation and an important learning for us around additional thing that needs to happen to make this accessible to all our families. Any questions from board members? Thank you. If you have anything to add on that, or should we move to talent?
We can move to talent.
All right.
So thank you, Brian, and thank you for cutting this slide to the last bit. The last presentation, because we were lighter on some of the other things today, wanted to make sure we got some updates. So I'm going to ask Dr. Shawna Tucker to join us and whoever she wants here. And I'm apologizing for her as well, because I cut her slides as well. But she had a really nice, just update of everything going on in the talent office. But I really But today, I'm going to turn it over to her to give us some updates about the recruitment and retention issue.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Board Chair Walton, Vice Chair Benham, and board members. I am very pleased to be here to share with you an update on the talent office initiatives. And I'm very pleased, I cannot do this work alone. We have many new initiatives, as you well know. And I have several of my unit coordinators and staff here. And I'll just briefly introduce them from the Bureau of Certification. I have my two unit coordinators, Kalen Richardi and Patty Wilson. I have from the Bureau of Educator Effectiveness, Sharon Fuller. I have our program approval coordinator for our EPPs, Lauren Tefredi. I have Dr. Jewel Tolles, who is the Bureau Chief for the Office of Dyslexia and Reading Disability. And Mary Glassman, who's our diversity equity coordinator, could not be with us today, but she was a part of the presentation.
I don't want to interrupt, but we just have to note for how long this board has been hoping for you all to have a full array of staff to come to fill both sides of the room today. So, well done, Commissioner, getting that done.
And we have four new employees that we have welcomed this year. We have two new staff members in the Bureau of Certification. And we have two new staff members in the Bureau of Educator Effectiveness. And we are thrilled to have them, and they are busy at work. In the talent office, our mission is to remain customer-focused and solution-driven in all that we do. So I just want to share a few things that we are doing within certification. So what's new in CERT, the hot topic? The Connecticut Education Certification Council, which meets on a monthly basis. And for everyone who does not know, our certification regulations have existed since 1998 and have not been updated since then. So it is the work of this council to really study and look at where we are and to pretty much overhaul our current certification regulations. We have all key stakeholders at the table. And the mission and the work of the council, they will focus on increasing diversity, offering multiple pathways to certification, removing unnecessary barriers while maintaining research-based standards. They will also, the council will also work directly with our educator preparation programs. And we have representatives at the table who are a part of the council to ensure alignment of our work with CATE standards. And that is what our programs are approved based on. And the work of the council, the agendas, the minutes, those are all posted on our website for the public and for everyone to see. The other thing that we are focusing on, and fingers crossed on this one, our CECS certification system within our office dates back to 2009. And it is moving really, really slow, as you can imagine. And things have advanced since then. So we are seeking a cloud-based solution to replace the CECS system and modernize the workflow of the certification bureau. So we're in the early phases of drafting our RFP. I've met with colleagues from other states. There are two specific systems that we are looking at that other states have adopted and implemented. And so we are very hopeful that maybe in 2024, we will have a vendor and a new system. And it will take us, of course, a year, probably 18 months to transfer everything to this cloud-based system. But at least we're on the right path, moving in that direction to update. Another hot topic, enhanced reciprocity. Effective April 18, 2022, many of you were here when I brought information to you about northeastern reciprocity, which we now offer. That takes, we accept certificates, certifications of educators from Virginia all the way up through Maine, District of Columbia, and Puerto Rico. So I have some data to share with you. Since April of 2022, we have issued 2,306 endorsements through enhanced reciprocity. 1,576 total educators have been issued at least one endorsement through enhanced reciprocity. And we have 931 newly-employed educators certified through enhanced reciprocity who are employed within the past three years here in Connecticut. So we are now working with our partner, WestEd. We have now entered phase two of enhanced reciprocity. And we are looking at the following states that are being researched. We've decided to move to the Midwest and down south. So we are looking at Illinois, Indiana, Michigan, Ohio, Wisconsin in the Midwest. And for the South, Alabama, Florida, Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee, and Texas. So their report and information will be provided to the CSDE by the end of this month. And we will hopefully be able to implement phase two by February. So more information will be coming to the board with that final report. On the B side, our Educator Evaluation and Support Council is still busy at work. We thank you for adopting the Connecticut Guidelines back in June. That committee, under Sharon, and many others that are working with us, the rest throughout the state. We've offered all types of statewide trainings that are still ongoing for our districts. We hope to have a state model plan to recommend to you in February of 2024. And you can see a listing of the model for implementing Connecticut Guidelines listed on the right. I won't go through each bullet. But that committee is hard at work trying to have that model plan ready for you in February and to roll out. Next, our grants for educator preparation program, known as G4EPP. Many of you remember, and you were at Southern Connecticut State. Government Governor Lamont and Commissioner Russell Tucker rolled out the $2 million allocation to our EPPs to offer support to our teacher candidates. And I have some data to share with you. We dispersed $1 million in 2022, '23. We're now in year two of the second million dollars. And of course, these funds are to cover licensure, fees, assessments, and costs associated with fingerprinting and background checks. So the first graph will show you spending by test and fee type. And you notice that edTPA was the number-one test that funds were used to support. Number two was Practice Two, and the third was Foundation of Reading. In the second graph, we list the educator preparation program with the enrollment number as well as what their year-one allocation was. On the third graph, on impact, we've also broken it down by content area so that you can see the students who are taking advantage of these funds. And the largest number would be elementary education at 500, followed by special education at 207. And TESOL and early childhood were tied at 100. And our fourth and final slide breaks it down by race and ethnicity of the students who have taken advantage of the additional funds. Our Connecticut 616 Educator Pipeline, we continue to find ways to diversify our educator workforce by providing various pathways. We are truly committed to addressing the teacher shortage. And this is just a highlight of several things that we're doing. We offered this year through additional funds, $500,000 has been available to school districts to start their Educators Rising Program, which is our statewide Grow Your Own. We also have offered, as the CSDE, through the $5.5 million Federal COVID Relief Funds, dual-credit courses and opportunities for school districts. And I'm pleased to say, we've been working with the Connecticut State College and University System at the talent office for the past two years to ensure that there are at least nine credit hours, three courses that are education-based courses for students who are interested in pursuing education that they may take and that are offered by many of our universities. So that when our students graduate and want to go into education, they've got these nine hours that will be accepted at the community college level or in an EPP program. And this year, we launched our Aspiring Educators Diversity Scholarship. This year, we have funding for $4 million. And next year, we have funding for $10 million. And that is for diverse students graduating from our priority school districts in Connecticut and enrolled in an approved educator preparation program. Our Connecticut Educators Rising Program is growing, especially through the grants that I just mentioned that we offered. This is the third year of our program here in Connecticut. We now have 22 school districts that are enrolled with more than 500 students that are participating. We will hold our statewide competition on March 8, 2024, at Central Connecticut State with our winners that will be headed to the national competition in Washington, DC at the end of June. And for us, it's all about the students. I am pleased to say that yesterday, the University of Bridgeport hosted us and hosted our Ed Rising students and faculty. We held our fall professional development session for our teacher leaders as well as for administrators. And we installed, for the first time, our inaugural Connecticut Ed Rising Student Cabinet, which is comprised of six students from around the state. And they are very diverse, and they're very excited about the work ahead. So they will be the students leading our work here in Connecticut. This is, the next slide is a photo of some of our Ed Rising students at the Teacher of the Year Professional Development at Mohegan Sun. I'm very pleased to say that the Teacher of the Year Council has been very supportive of our young students who are interested in pursuing education as a profession. They allot slots for us and for the students to come and attend their professional development sessions that they offer throughout the year because they want to embrace them and serve as role models for them as they enter this field. Back to the Aspiring Educators Diversity Scholarship. Again, this scholarship is for diverse students who graduated from a public high school in a priority school district. The students must be enrolled in an EPP program. They can receive up to $10,000 per year for undergraduate or graduate program. This year, and this is our first time doing this, and it took us a little while to get everything straight, we had over 300 applicants. Of the 300 applicants, over half were high school students. So the good thing is, we have their emails and we can communicate with them and come back to them in the spring and say, okay, are you graduating? Upload that acceptance letter to the EPP so that we can verify and give money. We are, right now, we have about 50 completed applications for students who are currently in EPP programs. We are verifying their enrollment with their deans and that they're in good standing, as well as with the financial aid offices, because our goal is to have the first 5,000 dispersed this semester. We have to do it every semester because we have to ensure that the student is still enrolled and in good standing. So this is a process and a learning process for us, but we are moving that along. The other exciting initiative, our Connecticut Teachers Apprenticeship Program. We have been working on this for quite a while with our partners at the Department of Labor, as well as we've been working with the unions. As you know, when you establish an apprenticeship program, you must have support from your stakeholders, specifically the unions, which represent the districts and the teachers. And I am very pleased to say that we will. We are waiting approval by the Department of Labor, which we anticipate will happen this month. We are looking to launch our two apprenticeship programs in January of 2024. Our two pilot districts will be Waterbury Public Schools and the Britton Public Schools. And our two programs, we've built the next-gen program, which was created three years ago at Central Connecticut State University. So that will be one apprenticeship program. The second will be the Connecticut Teacher Residency. Our goal in doing that is we wanted to focus on the earn while you learn for our students enrolled in EPPs as well as those who are non-certified staff already working. So we wanted to cover the entire spectrum and offer all of our individuals and candidates an opportunity to be apprentices within our district. At last, certainly not least, Public Act 23-167, Section 10, Education Diversity Plans for Districts. Each local and regional board of ed must submit their educator diversity plan to the CSDE for review and approval. They're due March 15 of 2024. Those needing revision must be submitted by May 15. All of the diversity plans will be available on the Board of Education's internet website and on the district's website as well. To date, we have offered several informational webinars for our districts. We also have a guidebook, a toolkit. And you can see the template that districts are asked to follow in the graphic. And we have provided resources and support, and those will be ongoing through January, February, up until the time of submission. So I wish to thank the Commissioner as well as our Deputy Commissioner, Sonia Moyano, for your leadership and your support of all of the efforts and initiatives of the talent office.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tucker. I'm sure we're glad you're being sort of part of today's meeting, being able to hear from our Blue Ribboned School, hearing from them, talking about the importance of Tier One, how that connects to reading and ensuring that every one of our kids has, can read, have the right to read. And so we have to dig in on that. You also heard out of the Blue Ribbon, the importance of that educator in the classroom as being key. And, right, we got enough, well, we had an opportunity to hear about the special ed, which is a part of that intervention as well. But then you've heard about the importance of educator. And we have been, as a board, dealing with the pipeline issues in our state, the lack, the teacher vacancies, and our desire to have our educator workforce reflect the increasing diversity in our state and have students in all of our districts be able to be taught by educators who represent the diversity of our state. And you're hearing the work now that talent has done. So thank you for tying this together so nicely for us today. I have two questions for you. One relates to the chart that you gave us around the grant for educator preparation program and the content areas that are being impacted. And I certainly note is that we're ending up with a good number of educators around special education. But my question around the, where the content areas, I'm wondering how that connects to what areas that need are and what we're doing to try to incentivize the educators prepared in the areas that we know that we need. And then my other question is just a more broad one for you. This is a ton that you're doing, that's your work to address the issues. But I also heard the Commissioner say she cut a whole bunch of your slides. So I'm like, what, what, what else? What, what else? I mean, that comment brought about just not in that free people, like what other highlights should we expect in the future meetings?
Okay, I'll start with your last question. Oh, one of the things that we cut and that we fully embrace in our office, celebration. So recognition programs fall within the talent office. So you've experienced Teacher of the Year. We also host the Para Educator of the Year and the Open Family Foundation Award. So those are our recognition tons. And I think that they're very critical and very important in embracing and celebrating the profession. We also now have the Office of Dyslexia and Reading Disability. Dr. Tolles will come before you, I'm sure, at a future board meeting. She's been working very hard. She's fully staffed now with her team to share updates on the work that they are doing and how they fit into the work of the talent office. What I will share to your first question about G4EPP and addressing shortage areas, I was very happy to see the 207 for special education. But I will say, my wish list, and I hope that we can expand in this area. When I think about the scholarship that we're now offering, and we've spent time looking at the portal and the applications, maybe in the future, it might be a recommendation or consideration that possibly additional funds for that scholarship be designated for persons who are entering those shortage area professions, such as special education, such as STEM areas. So that's something that we are definitely thinking about, and we keep that on the forefront. And also really trying to think of ways to engage and interest more persons who really enter those shortage, shortage areas. So that's definitely on, on our radar.
Thank you, appreciate that. Or, yeah, just, yeah.
It was an impressive number of new teachers resulted from the enhanced reciprocity. But it strikes me that reciprocity, by definition, runs in both directions. Have we wanted to do as well as for ultimate?
Honestly, we looked at those numbers as well, for the most part, we have maintained, which is a good thing. Because we want to check that, we want to make sure people are coming in. And we want to also make sure that our folks are not running out the door going someplace else.
Thank you. Good question.
Yes, that's right.
Congratulations on your good work. And you mentioned
And you mentioned recognition. And at the Teacher of the Year celebration, I saw you gave two awards to early career teachers in color. What ones did I include?
Yes, that was also in the presentation. We had their pictures. We want to encourage and celebrate our young people who are interested in pursuing education. And yes, at Teacher of the Year, they did receive two scholarships. And we have additional funding coming from our partners here. Elizabeth Scheddon, CEA, she shared with us yesterday that they also have funds that they're going to be offering. So she shared that with our students yesterday at the conference for, to really celebrate those that want to enter our profession. So more and more funding will be coming.
These were early career teachers.
Yes, these are early career teachers. So we have not just our high schools, we have those that are in the field and now those that are early career between years one and three, being recognized for their work. So that's part of our retention strategy.
So, thank you. And I'm entirely proudly, I sit here because we can still ever need it with all the initiatives and all the work that we're doing every day. In my management tool, our agency, we're one agency, one voice. Regardless of where the work is happening in the agency, that's what we do, and so we do it proudly. So thank you for that. And I can assure the board that you'll be getting updates on the air that I cut from Brian. I'm sure on a later meeting. And I know I said John's sitting here, and I just wanted to add, so thank you, Dr. Tucker. I wanted to do the last things with the, we recently announced a new campaign on School is Better With You. Although, I should share with you that for the month of October, because we do collect the attendance data on a monthly basis so we can be data informed, October 2023 shows a 17.8% chronic absence rate. This is, we're showing a continuous decline. Where we were last October was 22.7%. The state, our superintendents, our educators, our families, and the folks within the agency, they are doing this every single day. I had a chance and was invited to present just last week to the Educators Writers Association. These are journalists who are covering chronic absence. And they had a workshop on the chronic absence, the threat to academic recovery. And they were talking to experts, but they also want to talk to a state that is immediate and has work, and that is our state, Connecticut. So we've got a lot of work to do, but sharing that effort. So as I said to them, we're not just data informer, data obsessed. So we use that information to join, really to impact our strategies. And so the Better With You campaign is saying, even though things are moving in the right direction, there is still so much work to be done. And we want to accelerate that pace of improvement so that work is happening. School is better with you. So you'll see those, and folks are telling me it's all out on social media. We want families, we want everybody to know, and for students themselves to also recognize the need to stay connected in school every day. So that is actually done. I wanted to share that with you. And the next two slides are just shout-outs. You'll see pictures of the Teacher of the Year. Thank you again for being there with us. Those are some pictures we celebrate our educators. The other picture is our annual Kate Capes Convention. And what it does send, those who were there for the workshop that usually happens. And my deepest appreciation to Kate for the Friend of Education Award. As I mentioned when I was there, it really is just another day of the work that we do together. I'm so pleased to be leading that with all of you. You'll hear more about the state personal development grant from Brian the next time we're able to get Brian in front of you. But just really want to thank everyone. As you can see, and as I will reiterate, the work of the agency is moving forward. We're leading this work together. I am so pleased with the team that we have, and so pleased that together, did that say that? But really having the team together who are just in it every day. And to them, I say, I can't do without you. And education in the state is better for all of you and all of us working together. So thank you so much and for the voice for what we do every day. That is it.
That is a wonderful Commission's report. So thank you. Thank you for all of those updates. This has been a really rich, rich set of presentations today. I will move it forward. Item seven, we don't have anything that we need to take action on. Item eight, I'm not aware of any financial matters to be brought to us. Item nine, agenda, there are no items. So that brings us to our wonderful board committee report, beginning with academic standards and assessment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon.
It feels like evening.
Our meeting will be next Monday, December 11, where Iron Parisian's team will provide the committee with an update on the social studies model curriculum. I'm still looking forward to that.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing more accountability and support.
Yes, with all the school visits that we have undertaken in the last couple of months, ours, December 8, will not take place. It will resume in January. And I just want to also thank the board members that attended the school visits with me to Waterbury, Derby, New Britain, and Hartford. They were great ways. It is a nice addition that we found with accountability over the last few years to really get out into the field and not just read the report and actually see all these initiatives in person. So I extend my great gratitude to Iron Parisi and her team, Jen Webb that was with us for all these visits, and her team. So it was, it was really great to see them. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Our report, so before I ask for Mr. Harris' report, I'm just going to lift up. We have celebrated all of the new hires showing up. I know that Mr. Harris needs some new hires in his area as well. So finance audit, if I should.
Okay. The finance and audit report, we met yesterday afternoon with our interim director Gloria McCree, the administrative assistant Carrie Anne Dunham. In attendance, Alan Taylor, Bonnie Burr, Patricia Kevney, and Roger Person. And we heard an update on departmental activities to include the numbers of visitations, audits, and basically just taking care of the state's monies. We've got a full schedule now in place for 2024 that's been set up for our committee to meet on a quarterly basis. And unfortunately, because I'm so, I was so pleased with the report coming from our interim director Gloria McCree. But unfortunately, she's only the interim. So we've got two days of interviews next week, and hopefully we will find a permanent director.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Our Legislation and Policy Development.
Good afternoon. Legislation and Policy Development met this morning. Barbara, Stefan had brought to us seven, I can't speak, what's that mean? Seven legislative proposals that we discussed. So those will come before the board in January. In the interim, there's several questions that we have about one of the proposals around the Adult Ed credit increase that we'll deal with and get those answers in order to then come back. I think in January, we are expecting Greenwich to come back related to the usual equity increases of their construct. And I think that was on it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. So at the Technical High School last month, Flatpact hosted their eighth annual Thanksgiving dinner and served over 100 community members from the Death Health Center, Bridges Healthcare Incorporated, Milford Senior Center, and the Milford Transit District. The 40 culinary students get an opportunity to practice their catering skills and a way to give back to the community. We're thrilled to announce that applications for admissions are now open for grades nine and 10 for students in Connecticut looking to pursue trade education starting in 2024. And Dr. Solis does a talk called "Succeeding in the Modern Workforce", and she completed the latest episode, which spoke about manufacturing and what it takes to succeed in the modern workforce. So that's been published, and it is available on our podcast page. Thank you. Wonderful.
Thank you, thank you. Our NASTI report now comes to us by a chair. Yesterday, NASTI held a webinar on chronic absenteeism that looked at, it was one by Henry Chang at Attendance Works, which of course we're very familiar with. It was a great webinar that looked at all the data and all the reasoning behind the chronic. They were very thrilled to bring up Connecticut's reduced rate. They have it on a national platform. It's true that Connecticut was one of those districts to look for. And in fact, the two speakers that spoke said that, that the best thing that districts can do, that they can do, is to look at those who have beat the odds. And as soon as that went into that conversation, once the webinar was over and it was just board members on the call, Connecticut was on the screen. And so that, you know, that's always hard for me to see, you know, our state up there. And a lot of questions came from that, but we certainly are. And Hedy remarked that, you know, she can recall, the Commissioner and I were at John Barry School. I was still a classroom teacher back then. And she said, that's, you know, that's where, why Connecticut is doing so well is because it's been a decade of working on attendance, and it hasn't dropped through commissioners, and it is a priority. So it was a very good webinar to see. And of course, she was also represented at our NASTI conference that was held too recently. And again, Connecticut was one of those promising states to look at. So that was always nice to see. I'll move on to the CIRC report, which you have in front of you. I just want to point out that the CIRC has a new podcast as well as a newsletter. The newsletter's been out for a couple of months with the podcast, so I would encourage you to check that out. And then you have the rest of the CIRC report with you. And before we close, I would like to ask the students to just speak of the, I had asked a question this morning of them, what happened to that initiative that you brought to me back, I think when you came on the board. So I think you just let the rest of the board know where that stands.
Yeah, sure.
So something that Janine and I talked about was, you know, trying to get the word out to the rest of students of what's going on here because we all find it so informative and educational. And so we worked with the Director's Communications to set up an Instagram account. And so that's something we're going to start on a regular basis, posting updates from meetings, and then also publicizing the position of student member itself. Because that was something, you know, we sort of had to dig through to get. And we really want to make sure the most qualified students are in the position of teacher. So we're really excited for that.
All of us that want to follow you, what are we looking for?
DT Student Reps is the Instagram handle.
Yeah, and just to add, we were talking about the whole idea of like referencing others as an example. The way we even came up with this idea was actually coming across Pennsylvania's Student Reps account on Instagram. And we saw that they posted a recap of every meeting and communicated directly with the students across the state, even if they weren't at their school. And so we took inspiration from them, and that's why we went through a lot of emails and just eventually got to launching the account. So, and we got 100 followers in less than a week.
Wonderful. So please help spread the word for our student members, young people in your lives, not just young people, but especially young people in your lives following the account. And thank you for your leadership on that and for elevating student voice. With that, we have moved through our agenda. This is our December meeting. I should take a moment to wish you all a happy and healthy holiday season. Hope that you have time to rest and reflect, if there's such a thing, given all of what's going on here. But I note that you now have two days. That means you can take a day off. And we will see you in 2024. I motion for adjournment. Be in motion, be in motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There we go. I'm sure all are in favor. Thank you all. We are adjourned at 12:12. Thank you.